Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the first meeting of the Roseberry School Board for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. I have a few things of housekeeping I'd like to announce first. For our new directors in front of you is a microphone. When you get ready to speak, make sure you depress the button and see a green because the meetings are being recorded. And when you're not speaking, press the button, give it red so it's not picking up your voice. For those of you in the audience that would like to participate in public participation, we have a public participation card here on the sign-in desk. If you have a card, you may speak. No card, no speak. We ask that you be respectful of each other as we here to govern us and to do business with the Roseberry School Board. The first thing we need to do tonight is the pledge of allegiance. I have all of you to stand and turn to the flag and I will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated and thank you very much. The next item on the agenda tonight is the honor of our superintendent to swear in three new board members and one reelect.
Chair Johnson, thank you very much. It is my pleasure tonight as a district clerk to swear in our three, four new board members, although Rod has been here with us for a meager three decades, I believe, this year thirty-four. So we're going to go ahead and do that up here and we are, we'll do these in alphabetical order and Director Cotton. Jump over it. I, if I fell, I wouldn't get up.
Hey, how are you? Showing up late.
All right. Okay. So I'm gonna have you raise your right arm to the square. And repeat after me. I, Rod Cotton. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District number four.
And the policies of Douglas County School District number four.
During my term.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially. I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. By the authority vested me at the clerk of Douglas County School District number four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseford Public School Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve. All right. Thank you. Right under the square. Repeat after me. I, Stephen Hammerstein.
I, Stephen Hammerstein.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District number four.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District number four.
During my term.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
vested me as the clerk of Douglas County District number four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseford Public School Board of Education. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, Mike. Got the fan club down here. Okay, Michael, if you'd raise your right arm to the square, repeat after me. I, Michael Leon.
I, Michael Leon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Douglas County School District number four.
And the policies of School District.
Number four.
Douglas County.
Of Douglas County. During my term.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge the responsibilities.
As the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
And thereby the authority vested me as the clerk of Douglas County School District number four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseford Public School Board of Education. Congratulations. What you been waiting for? Okay, Andrea, if you'd raise your right arm to the square, repeat after me.
I, Andrea Minor.
I, Andrea Minor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Douglas County School District number four.
And the policies of Douglas County School District number four.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities.
Discharge responsibilities.
Of the office of school board member.
The office of school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
By the authority vested me, a clerk of Douglas County School District number four, I hereby declare you duly sworn, duly elected and eligible to serve as a member of the Roseford Public School Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you very much Superintendent Gordon. I want to personally congratulate each of the new candidates in the reelection to serve in the community. It's something that you will look forward to and enjoy for the next four years. Next item on the agenda is the review of the agenda as we pretended.
Thank you. The only change we have in terms of review of the agenda, the last two items that were originally on the agenda that we sent out Friday have been changed. Those will be covered in my superintendent report toward the end of the meeting. And in terms of communication, again, welcome our new board members and welcome to the entire board. I was reading a quote recently I'll share with you from Arnold Schwarzenegger of all people who said this. He said, help others and give something back. I guarantee you'll discover that while public service improves the lives in the worlds around you, its greatest reward is the enrichment and meaning it will bring to your own life. Hope that you'll take that into your heart as we get started here with our new board education. Thank you.
On the agenda. Need a motion to approve? I have a second. Are there any questions? You ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. That the record shows unanimous, considering agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is public participation. I've asked assistant to, assistant superintendent need to monitor your two minutes, two minutes per participant. Please be respectful for your two minutes and the next person two minutes. She will let you know. Do you have any cards? Anyone present on Zoom?
If anyone on Zoom would like to participate in public participation, please use the raise your hand feature and make sure that your first and last name are displayed.
We have no public participation. Let the record reflect that. The next item that we're going to go into our action item. And the first thing that needs to be done tonight after we have sworn in new members is the reorganization of the twenty-three, twenty-four school board by the election of a chair and a vice chair. And I've asked Superintendent Gordon to conduct this election.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Chair Johnson. Tonight is, you know, the board's primary responsibility tonight is to elect a chair and a vice chair. I will start the process by opening the floor for nominations and following nominations in a vote, then the elected chair will assume the role of moving forward on the election of the vice chair. So I will open the floor to the board tonight for nominations for a board member to serve as the chair for the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The floor is open to the board.
I'm a newbie, my apologies. Nominating Rod Cotton.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor for Director Cotton to serve as the chair. Is there a second? Okay, there is a motion and a second. Are there any other before we vote and have discussion, are there any other nominations? Okay, we have a first and a second. We're going to go ahead and vote and any discussion after that. So we have a first and a second. All members in support of Director Cotton to serve as the board chair for Roseford Public School for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Please make that known. Say aye. Any members in opposition? Okay, Director Cotton. Chair Cotton. Good to have you on the board. I'll turn it over to you for the process of election for a vice chair.
Okay, so I will open the floor for nominations for vice chair for this school year.
I nominate Reverend Howard Johnson.
We have a motion.
Second.
I have a second for Director Reverend Howard Johnson to be vice chair. Let's take a vote. All in favor? Okay, motion is unanimous. Okay, so our first order of action items is going to be resolutions. And there's several of them. If you turn to page two of your packet. Oh, this is. And, and so I would tell you in years past, we have been able to do all of these in one motion. But I think tonight we should do them separately. I think it's kind of a, it'd be good for all of us to kind of get in the habit of how to make a motion properly. And so and after the motion is made and we have a second, then we'll have discussion. And it, it may look like it's simple things such as designating a newspaper or a bank or whatever, but if you have, if you have questions, this is the time to do it. So the first resolution is twenty-three, twenty-four oh one, the designation of clerk and deputy clerk. So we'll need a motion.
That we accept this resolution.
Twenty-three, twenty-four oh one.
Twenty-three, twenty-four one.
Okay, we need a second, second, second. Any discussion? It's call for the vote and let's raise our hands so that Janet can, can count. All those in favor. Opposed? Okay, unanimous. The next is twenty-three, twenty-four oh two, the designation of custodian of funds and use of facts, signatures. Need a motion?
A motion that we approve, resolution twenty-three, twenty-four two.
Second. Have a second. Discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Okay. Next one is the designation of auditor twenty-three, twenty-four oh three. Need a motion?
I move to accept resolution twenty-three, twenty-four three.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Well, I do have a question. How long have we had this current auditor?
Here we are in our second cycle and we've had them as our auditors ever since I've been here. We attempted, we reached out to auditors and said, would you be interested in bidding on our audit? And we got no response. We did not do a formal request for proposal. It's, it's a, it's a common thing around the state that people aren't getting anyone to bid on their auditors, on their audits.
And a ballpark figure of what it cost us.
About sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
We're in the wrong business. Sixty-five thousand here. It's a big.
We have a large.
We deal with multi millions of dollars here. Okay.
We, just to comment real quick. On behalf of the, on behalf of the auditors, there's new auditing standard that hold auditors accountable for the financial statement that they audit. And that liability is a myth. You may have read in the news lately that one audited firm just about a certain person's tax returns for ten years for the same reason. So the fact that we have a auditing firm that is qualified according to GAAP generally accepted accounting principle to take on our business and do it is a blessing for us.
And my question wasn't directed to any negative towards them because they've done a very good job. Just when we're spending that kind of money, it should be on the record. Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Okay. The next one is twenty-three, twenty-four oh four, destination of depositories. Need a motion?
I move that we accept resolution twenty-three, twenty-four four. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Twenty-three, twenty-four oh five, designation of attorney. I know we're going to get some questions out here, so let's have a motion first.
I move to accept resolution twenty-three, twenty-four five.
Second. Okay, discussion.
I'm just curious, how long have they been our school?
As long.
Longer than I've been with the school district and I've been here for fifteen years. The district has once approximately, I want to say four years ago, did request proposals for services and they came out on, on top.
We've had this. Thirty years. In order to be
They can stop here.
Auditor. They are, they're specialized in this and we do use a firm, they're local, but we also use a what's the correct name of the firm that we use a lot too? Yeah, we use them a lot, a lot too. So we're pretty well covered.
They are, Hungerford's works through, they are a, an outside counsel from PACE or OSK membership get this pace. Which there's a, that's our liability coverage, but they have outside counsel with a variety of attorneys and Hungerford's we use occasionally.
Okay, so let's call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Next one is twenty-three, twenty-four oh six, destination of election official.
I move to accept resolution twenty-three, twenty-four oh six.
Second, discussion? So do you folks know who the election official is?
What exactly do they do?
There you go. There's a good question. What exactly do they do?
Well, that's a bit of a braided question. How much time do we have on that question? We have a time limit. Relative to the election official, there's a, there's a variety of things that superintendents do is the clerk that was able to swear on our board members. That's one of the roles that they have is the sworn clerk. And as the clerk of the school district, that does provide me the opportunity to do certain things like swear on board members. So every district has an election, elected designate election official. In most districts, that is the superintendent.
See? Good question, right?
Yeah, great question.
Let's call for the motion. All in favor? Next one is twenty-three, twenty-four oh seven, destination of budget officer and newspaper. I can never understand why they were lumped in together, but anyway, that's how it is. So we need a motion and a second, please.
I move to accept resolution twenty-three, twenty-four oh seven.
Need a second? Discussion?
Is the news review the only paper that we can do, use for this? It is the only one that qualifies and meets the recommendation or the qualifications that.
For budget publications.
Now, does that require a certain amount of subscribers to make it qualify? What are the qualifications for that?
Circulation. And probably capacity as well. Because I have published rather large notices, there's prescribed ones for budgets. I mean, that's not the official reason, but you have, have a newspaper that can print the official forms that are required for us to use for budget publications.
Has there any been, has there been any discussion or exploration of any other outlet outside of the news review in the past?
There has been discussions, at least for the past four years since I've been here.
It does have to be a newspaper, correct? It can't, hasn't been updated where it can be an online media of some kind. It has to be a paper newspaper legally still.
A general circulation.
And how much does it cost a district? Every time we run a notification and budget meeting, I mean, and.
Well, it all depends on the size of it. Some of the larger ones can run six, seven hundred dollars. And of course, then we do some smaller ones that are quite a bit less.
Do we budget though annually then for that or?
Yes.
Okay. And is there like a ballpark figure of how much it just costs us to put any of our, or all of our things in the paper?
You would have a budgeted publication amount in each of our specific areas. So the fiscal office has one and that covers our budget publications. The superintendent's office also budgets for publication costs for the things that they put in the newspaper that they're required to, to officially announce.
Okay.
Guess I kind of didn't complete my question. Sorry. So in, in those discussions, what were the other options? I guess that might be, I don't know if that's Jared that it was.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. We, there, again, to Cheryl's point, in order to the threshold becomes really about, we think about a public institution wanting to be transparent with the community about things like public meetings and there's a variety of things we need to post by statute. Are, the direction we get is to make a designation on, really on, on distribution, which paper can produce the circulation and get that word out as we can. It doesn't mean we don't have other forms of media. We, we do, we use that, but the law and statute requires, currently requires a newspaper that can deliver the circulation for transparency. We've had questions in terms of looking at news review circulation, taking a look at, you know, how many homes, is it a cross section of the community? Where are we? You know, how do we, how do we get the word out about what we're doing as an organization? And, but that we've had questions about really, I think, all of these questions on, is this the right designation? I've asked that question since I've been here relative to the newspaper question is, is that the right? We just aren't, there are a few options in our area, but they are limited in print media. And so there was a you know, it's, it's tricky. If you said, well, there's an adjacent city, you know, maybe distribution could be higher there, but are we getting that in Douglas County? We're getting that in our school district area. And that's where, as we wrestle with this, the distribution and circulation in the community is, is currently highest with the news.
There are three other newspapers in print in Douglas County. The Red and Black is kind of, the Red and Black does not print on Saturday. The Argonian and the Red and Black are printed in Vancouver, Washington and delivered by truck to Douglas County every day. The other newspaper that Metford went from a non-print copy to digital copies. The Beacon doesn't have the circulation to move. Okay, so you try to look at a different option that were required by law to put this out. The other viable options are not on the plate. The Red and Black, the subscription rate is higher by twofold over the news review. So their advertising dollar is the same way. So if we spend six hundred dollars with news review, the Red and Black is going to cost you fifteen to sixteen hundred dollars for the same app. And I speak from advertising expense exposure with both of those papers.
Hey, any further discussion? Yeah, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Post? You get to vote. Yeah. Okay, and the last one is twenty-three, twenty-four oh eight, authorization to apply for grants.
I move that we allow Superintendent Corden to apply for grants.
Sir.
Discussion?
Thank you. I love applying for grants, sir.
I don't think you do.
Well, I was thinking about the superintendents I have, it's, it's, or designate. Cheryl, there you are.
I want these two to get credit.
Yeah.
Because they're the ones that do the.
They do the work. Agreed.
You're welcome. Okay, let's call for we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Yeah, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. You guys did well. Okay, let's move on into reports. Gary.
Thank you very much. Had this for participants both online and here with us today, a short report for the board. So first of all, welcome, said before, but welcome to our new and returning board members. We have a new, a new board. We are a new organization and look forward to working with each of you this year and, and supporting our students and help making sure our community can thrive. I want to just talk about a few things this, this evening. I want to give you an update real quick on summer learning. Over the last two years during the summer, we had additional funding from the state. Kind of during those COVID years, that was pretty significant and we had thousands of students attend schools over the last couple of years and heard from lots and lots of parents and students about the benefit of extending the school year. It was optional. But it was a real benefit and we tried our best to put together, there's no additional funding that came through for summer learning this year, but we do have summer learning happening, not to the extent we had before. But we do have a few things happening right now. There was, speaking of grants, a grant for Winchester Elementary, we're in the last year with three-year grant and they are having a great, great summer learning program right now at Winchester, specifically for students and families at Winchester in a grant-funded summer learning program that's going great. We have a little over a hundred students participating in extended school year right now at, at high school and that's been great. Some fantastic kids there, an amazing staff working with kids there. Want to thank Melissa Roberts who's here for heading up our extended school year and it's been wonderful and great things are happening there. We're thrilled to have. Extended school year and and it's been wonderful and great things are happening there. We're thrilled to have that. Happening right now. Additionally, at Roseburg High School, we have um summer learning happening with measure ninety-eight funded uh funded summer learning and there's some. Great classes and opportunities there for students happening. And then we have been prior prioritizing our eighth grade transition program. To support our incoming ninth graders to the high school this summer. A few items uh that I referenced at the beginning that were on in our initial agenda that I wanted to talk a little bit about tonight. Are going to be the next few items on on the docket here and these items will come to the board for official. Action for uh your potential approval at the our special meeting next week on the nineteenth. The first item that I want to talk about tonight that I will be asking for the board to consider next week. Is relative to school resource officers. We are um, we have a, we're, I feel blessed to have a great relationship with our law enforcement. The school district of law enforcement work very closely in our community and that's a benefit for everybody. It's a benefit to our students, our staff, our community. At large. Um, you know, I uh, I don't know how many times we've written, I've written this sentence here. But the first sentence on here is something I, we use a lot and it is true. It is a truism. That are the safety of our kids and our staff is paramount. It's the most important thing we do. We think about the trust the community puts in us. When you put the most important possession you have on that bus or drop them off at the school. My expectation of our staff and of myself is at a minimum, those kids come back to those parents or guardians at least as good as we dropped them off. Ideally, they come back a little better. They come back a little smarter. They come back with a little more experience with it with an opportunity they're excited about. And this is something I think about and most of us think about every single morning when we wake up. Are we doing everything we can to keep our kids safe? A few years ago, we had two school resource officers that were funded through um. We funded in partnership with Roseburg Police Department. Uh, and that that number was reduced uh two years ago now to one school resource officer. Um, we had hired Ed VRL or our um safety coordinator and we were hoping to maintain or augment the two we had, but it went to one. The reason it went to one is that the police department had a hard time recruiting and retaining their own employees. Um, we uh currently just have one. School resource officer for all twelve schools. We we uh because we'd set the funding aside for two, although the RPD wasn't able to hire. We were able to hire two public safety officers to work with Ed and that's been helpful. What I want to talk about today though is um Cheryl and I have been in conversations with Sheriff Hanlon. And under Sheriff Freeze over the last year. Um, our community, our school community is interesting because we have, not that there's necessarily um. Boundaries with with safety and security, but we have a number of schools that are in the city boundaries. But we do have four schools that sit outside the city and the county. That'd be Winchester, Green and Sunny Slope down south and to the west um Melrose. Uh, we Cheryl and I started a conversation about a year ago with the sheriff, just in terms of what we. Questions around what could we do to increase safety, particularly with an active threat? Because we know that the timing of an armed officer is critical in the event of an active threat. We do practice lockdown drills where the board has made a purposeful investment in vestibules for controlled access. We've done a number of things. Um, to try to ensure safety. But in the event of an active aggressor, what we need is an armed officer. So the proposal I'll just talk about tonight, we'll bring this next week is that in working with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. They would be willing to have two officers join our school district. The cost is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars per year. That would move us from one school resource officer dedicated to our schools to three. Um, in addition, we would have Ed and Ed works on a variety of things, including emergency operation planning and other things and our two public safety officers. Um, and I believe this would be a a huge boon for our community. In addition to being there for um active safety, they would be. That are a presence at our schools. Um, they would be doing anti-drug work and curriculum, working on safety and building a relationship, particularly with younger students on. How important police and law enforcement is as as kids move through the system. So. That is something that I will bring for your consideration on the nineteenth and I want to publicly thank Sheriff Helen. And under Sheriff Freeze for their efforts to engage in this conversation with us. Um, next, assuming this will go, I wanted to give you an update tonight on uh where we're at with the softball field that is low, well, will be located behind Finley Field. Um, for our newer board members, let me just uh uh give you a just a real quick update of the softball field. This, this can be confusing for members of the public who say, well, wait a minute. We said no to bond and now you're spending money on a softball field. How does this whole thing work? Um, the softball field, uh although I'm excited about the potential for students and I think it will be wonderful. Um, the process, the um for moving forward on this came as a result of a Title IX complaint. Um, that was associated with Legion Field and the installation of privately funded turf field at Legion Field. Um, Title IX uh was passed in the seventies and it's about equal opportunities for for males and females and athletics. Uh, what that's one of the designations of the law and because we had softball, the softball, the girls playing softball on non-turf, this um. Suit came forward and the district was deemed to be out of compliance, even though we don't own the field. We rent the field. It's not our property. Um, but it was determined that that um we needed to provide the girls adequate or equal. Um, field space. So we've been moving forward on the softball field update. I want to thank Cheryl. Northam who's done a really project managed this for us. It's been um complicated with a short timeline. Um, and I want to give you a quick update. So the transition house, this is um taking place. Um, you have this. There's a map up here behind Finley Field. Um, recently, the transition house that has students that are between eighteen and twenty-one at our schools. Um, was demoed. Um, we did a uh relocate with utility, working with Russo on that. It was and it was great. Um, Roseburg uh fire was able to use and train in that house before we were able to demo. Hartwood came in to some gleaning for things that they needed. But you can notice that picture on the bottom from an excavator that that house is um has been demoed. Uh, we always find interesting things when we demo houses. We found a couple of interesting things there that might slow the timeline down just a little bit, but I think we'll be okay there. Um, we will be um, the the bids are out and they're due back on the seventeenth and so. Next week on the nineteenth, um, we will bring um bids for board approval on the nineteenth to move forward on the civil site work for this facility. Again, our hope has been that we would have. Uh, students on this field in the spring of two thousand twenty-four, which is a quick turn. Um, everything has to go right. Uh, thanks to Cheryl, everything has gone right so far. We have great people working with us and we're hopeful that we can have that happen. Uh, next thing I want to talk about tonight is um also something that will come up on the June nineteenth meeting and that's about hand washing stations. I've got a picture from maybe, I'm not sure when Cheryl. At nineteen eighty-five, maybe? I don't know. Um, these are the old Bradley systems you've seen in the schools, um, kind of the horse trough, I like to call them. Um, we would like to, uh, we do have Esser funds and a reminder, Esser was a grant related to COVID. And schools receive three rounds of Esser funding across the country. And uh, this would come from Esser three funds. It's a grant that must be spent by September first currently of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we are going to petition the board uh next board meeting to move from those large Bradley systems that some people love. You kind of step on them and it sprays that teeny bit of water there. Um, to a tiny bit more expensive. Unit, which would be on the bottom, uh, but a more effective unit that will reduce operational costs for us. These units that you see on the bottom are not just meant to be a little more trendy and um more modern. They will cost a little bit more to install. There needs to be some backing, a little bit more patchwork on the drywall. But operational costs are significantly lower and will reduce our costs long term. As a district and those can be paid for out of Esser twenty-four units. They're they're uh seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars each. So it'd be uh a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars for twenty-four of those units. So we'll. Uh, we have the dollars in Esser right now to pay for that against a grant. If it's not spent, yeah, we assume you'll give that back and it'll be recouped. We'll come to the board for that petition next week. Uh, the final thing I want to, uh, then I can host any questions you have. I wanted to give you as more is not related to the the previous slides, but really. I thought it was important to um contextually to just share this with you. This is relatively new. I'm trying to think, Michelle, we got this uh within the last couple of weeks, I believe. Um, so our free and reduced numbers have really significantly changed as a community. It's important to kind of get an idea of this. So these are our current school buildings. The building we don't have on here is RVS right now. Um, that's a virtual building, so we don't do. Um, a daily lunch or breakfast there. But if you take a look at these numbers, um. Uh, I I won't talk a lot about, I think the context for free and reduces this for families that are struggling to put food on the table. For families that qualify, things are becoming increasingly difficult. I was at Walmart last night getting a couple of supplies, a hundred and thirty dollars later with two bags of groceries and I think I paid ten dollars for a. For a can of peanut butter, which I think was five dollars about a year ago. So this is interesting. We've seen a jump at Fergrove, for example, about twenty percent. Of students that that qualify for SNAP benefits or free and reduced. So I think it's uh important to see, if you look on that left-hand side, these elementary schools, you've got from Fergrove. Um, Eastwood, Sunny Slope, Winchester, Fulton, Four End and Down to Green, all between ninety-four and seventy-five percent of the students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. To the right, our other two elementary schools are significantly lower. Uh, Hugh Crest is at uh just about thirty-seven percent. Melrose is about twenty-one percent and there's a pretty, pretty steep. Uh, chasm between those two um populations. It's interesting. Now, something interesting happens here because Jolene and Fremont are about the same, about two out of every three students there. If you walk the hallways. They are struggling with food insecurity, likely. They're struggling to make ends meet in the home. Uh, and if you're qualifying for free and reduced lunch, you're really kind of oftentimes wondering where. How you're going to be able to put food on the table. Uh, we've been lucky to have us um. We've been, we fought the last couple of years to make sure we can provide. Um, free meals for students and that was during COVID and post-COVID as well. And I think it's been a great investment. Um, and I appreciate many people in here, including Cheryl and Kyle Meckin who've helped. Continue that process moving forward. You'll notice the high school numbers are lower. You know, we have a direct feeder with Julian and Fremont, all those students move into the high school and so you can say eight sixty-seven percent. What does that mean? We're under fifty percent for high school. Um, I don't know how the calculations exactly work. We do have a question to ODE about this, but if you look statewide, this is a pattern. That is reflective in nearly every school district where the high school numbers are less. And I'm not sure. I don't know how to explain that. It must be something the way that designation happens or benefits happen. It would be odd to me that sixty-seven percent of Roseburg High School students wouldn't be free and reduced because all of those students matriculate to the high school. But as a common pattern in the reporting across the state, Michelle and I looked at the numbers across the state today. That every high school we saw is actually lower than the middle school numbers. So I would say I would put an asterisk at the Roseburg High School at forty-six percent, think it's likely higher, but those are the current numbers for our free and reduced. Lunch numbers and it's it's an, there's a lot of conversations we can have about that, but I thought it was important to share with the board. And again, those numbers are up in some, in some of our communities about twenty percent from last year. And that is all I have, Director Cotton, tonight. And with that, I can answer any questions or um. Be done.
Before we move on to individual reports. There's um a new person where we all know sitting at the table. Would you introduce her and? Our new high school principal?
Yeah, thank you. That's be great. I'm a Dr. Weber and I think you've been here at every meeting since I've been here, which is great, but I would like to introduce. Um, well, in fact, I'll tell you a big story here. Oh, keep it short. Um, a few years ago, we were act, actually it was last year, so it wasn't a few years ago. The board, we were in a superintendent check-in. And the board asked a question and the question of they asked of me was this. What do you need to move the work forward in the district in terms of improving outcomes for students in the community? What is the thing we need to invest in or divest in? What do we need to do to move forward? And really without reservation, I had an answer and that was we needed a designated. Director of Teaching and Learning. We're a educational organization where we have a focus on pedagogy, teaching and learning, making sure kids are getting what they need and they're moving forward. And they're accelerating their progress and um Michelle Lee. Has been serving in multiple positions as both assistant superintendent and director of teaching and learning. And I continue to feel strongly that that director of teaching and learning position is massive for our district. We need a talented, dedicated person that can do that. And um I am thrilled that the board allowed that position to be um posted and hired and the dollars designated for that. And I'm thrilled that we hired Dr. Joe Weber, who had been the high school principal at Roseburg High School for the last eight years. Um, has a rich history in working in multiple levels here and and helping. Schools and the district be successful. She worked here at district office in a teaching and learning coordinator position. And thrilled to have Jill here to ensure that the district strategic plan and the board strategic plan about making sure that kids have the care, support, instruction they need. Can move forward. Joe is the right person for this and so. Great to have you here. Jill's normally at these meetings. This is her first meeting as a director and so welcome, Joe. Okay, and so we needed to hire a new high school principal, which is a big deal. And uh, we are thrilled that Dave Vickery. Um, is here. Dave's in the back. Dave is our new high school principal at RHS. Uh, Dave's been a great find for us. Dave was most recently the principal at Hillsborough High School for the last five years. Uh, Dave has deep roots in Douglas County, grew up here in Roseburg, graduated from. Roseburg High School. Um, had a. A a journey that took you different places. And um as a new dad. With Bear is how old Bear now? Year? Be nine months. Um. Dave had this impression and I met Dave about a year ago. Uh, Jill and Dave had done some principal things together. And um were at some conferences together and had a conversation with Dave a while ago about, hey, what's your future? And. Dave had this impression, it's time to new, you know, with a new baby, we gotta get back to our roots and we were able to woo Dave out of Hillsborough. Back down to God's country, Douglas County. And uh, welcome, Dave is he's uh, we're thrilled to have Dave. I will say something about Dave. Um, Dave, if you're not familiar with with Hillsborough High School. It is um a high school that has a a lot of assets, but a lot of challenges. Um, um. Twenty-five languages spoken on a regular basis. Um, uh, high levels of poverty, about ninety percent, ninety ninety percent of students live in poverty. Um. A lot of uh language learners, a lot of mobility. Um, uh, and a lot of challenges and. Uh, under Dave's watch, the graduation rate at Hillsborough High School last year was about nine, well, ninety percent, I believe. The five-year cohort, ninety percent. Dave's done a great job shepherding that in terms of what the board expects. What I have a demand in our organization and what we want for our kids. Dave's a great find. He was a. Um, he'll be able to pick up where Jill's left off and add to our assets here. So welcome, Dave. Great to have you at RHS.
I just want to add one Howard Johnson opinion to the statistics at the high school. Looking at it from a narrow-minded window. All of the students are restricted on campus until they get to high school. I want to get to high school. They can leave campus. They go eat lunch. So you may not get the same people in your calculation. Because. My church is next door to Little Caesar's Pizza and we have tons of students in there every day eating lunches. So you may not see them on your count for statistics. That could be one of the explanations why. It's down.
I was, I also wanted to say, um, I wonder how teenage employment might factor into that. If you're growing up for. Most of your childhood. Hungry. You're gonna want to get a job and.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
Yep, very good.
Okay, let's move to individual reports. And this is a time. Don't think we covered this on Monday, but this is the time. Uh, oh. Are we gonna get the new microphone?
Automatically, because I I just not that good of a multitasker. Yeah.
I know, thank you. Um. So this is time, anything you want to bring up? To talk about? Is it's our time? And then we'll move on. So I'm going to ask. Uh, Director Minor to go first. Is anything you like to?
I've learned today that you have to push the button to talk. No, I'm I'm really grateful and um. What uh in getting to know the people that are working in this district, they really are a wonderful group of people. This is a really great district and I'm really excited. District and I'm really excited. Um, to be able to do my part to help. Move these kids forward and uh keep them safe and help them to be the head and not the tail and that. Hopefully we'll get some innovations that no one else has done yet. And uh, that people will keep calling Roseburg School District to find out what we're doing to. Make us as great as we are. So, thank you.
Director Primm.
Want to welcome you guys uh for joining us on the board. And just it's such a learning experience and. And um, I think each one of you that I've met. You, you each are going to bring, you know, strength. In different areas that we really need and so I look forward to working with all of you on committees and. That we can do the best for for this district possible. So I appreciate that.
Hey, Director Hamerson.
Um, I I just want to say the first time I learned about uh what a school board even was. Um, was pretty scary. And I was really concerned about. What kind of adventure I was going down. Um, but you know, I I attended a a school board meeting. Um, what was that? The first time I met you? In Winchester and um. Uh, Jared noticed that I was there, immediately came up and shook my hand. Asked me if I had any questions. Incredible experience and I kind of went back thinking. You know. Wow, it must be scary in other areas, but I think they kind of have it together over here. So. Uh, just as as I've I've spent time in your office and spent time with each one of you. Um, it's it's been really, really. Inspiring that I am with such an amazing group of people. So. Um, you know, like Andrea said, I I want to be the example. Um, for the rest of the boards in the state to to look up to. And uh, I'm just, I feel real fortunate to be with this group.
Thank you.
It's the first time I get to press the button. Pretty excited. Uh, well, um, I I have to just agree with what what everybody has said so far and the new, the new people, what uh. What a great opportunity it is to be here. Um. I never ran for any kind of office before and uh, this is the first for me. And that was very exciting. All that worked. But um, but uh, you know, my my background uh is I taught for twenty years. Uh, at high school and junior high school and then I was in business for years. So I've kind of split back and forth between business and education and I always. I always wondered what boards did. I knew what the corporate boards did in in industry, but I. I never really, uh, I never attended and my kids, when they would go, I never attended a board meeting. Um. And now that I think of it, I don't know why I didn't because uh it's such an important time. And again, the new people, the people that I've met so far on the board have been um amazing and exciting. I look forward to uh getting to know the others that are a part of this team and. Um, anyway, thanks for uh for just this opportunity.
Director. Shirtless.
Just want to say, welcome to the new members. Uh, look forward to working with everybody for the next two years and serving the students of Roseburg.
And to my friend. You're all my friends, but to my special friend.
I like to welcome everybody and like to add that I have nothing to share that will benefit the kids.
I too, um, I'm looking forward to um.
I was gonna say, if I could, yeah, I forgot to thank Andrew too. He he allowed me to put a couple of signs up at his house. So that was, that was awesome.
I know I had to drive by every moment, but kidding. Um. Thank you for uh your support for me and for Howard. I do look forward to working with each and every one of you, especially with Howard. And I'm looking forward to, we will do the mentor program and I know. Andrew, you have a director minor, you have shown interest that you'd like to do that if. If any of the other three, two would like to do it. Then we'll figure out how we're going to split it out and do it, how how to do it and do it. And um, so give us, give us a couple of weeks to. Come up with it, but um, I think it'll be a benefit. It'll be a lot of fun. So anyway, welcome the three. And welcome to. The, I don't want to say older three, but the veterans that are here, we will have a good year. Um, there's going to be a lot of things that. Uh, we as a team and as a district will accomplish. There's, there will be some changes too. So. That's always, we look forward to that. Okay. Um. We're going to take a brief recess. And we're, then we will come out of um. Uh, and after the recess, we'll come back in, we'll go into an executive session. So um, thank you for coming. Uh, you're more than welcome to hang out somewhere. And when we reconvene, you can come back in, but. It's kind of boring tonight, but we're going to, well, I shouldn't say that, but nothing, uh. Yeah, no offense, no offense. Anyway, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. About five minutes.